Okay, I'd like to call to order the March 4th Statesboro City Council meeting. We're gonna begin with an invocation of Pledge of Allegiance led by Mayor Pro Tem Will Britt.
Absolutely. I'm gonna ask Mr. Allen Mulgrew if he would lead us in prayer today.
So bow our heads please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for a good day. Thank you for your love and kindness toward and we seek you this day and every day that you will bless our leaders of our city, our state, and our nation, Lord, with wisdom and that they seek your guidance in the decisions they make each day. We thank you that you've given us a good family of friends in our neighborhood, Lord, and we just want to be people that are appreciative, thankful, and we're being blessed with friends and brothers.
Amen. If you were to the Spanish, would it be like? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're gonna start today's meeting with a presentation of the Beautification Award by Mr. Henry Clay. It's Mr. Clay, if you'll come forward please.
Yes, sir. I'm gonna stand over here if it's alright, I think everybody can see me. Can everybody hear? It's really my pleasure to be here today to present two separate beautification awards that you may or may not know. The beautification commission is part of the city's structure and we are always looking for good properties to present awards to, those properties that have pride and beautify their property are what we are always looking for. So, the commission voted unanimously at their last meeting to present a beautification award to two properties. The first one I'd like to discuss is the Forum. You may know this, I go out in Calabear City South on 301. I don't think you could miss it if you go by it because it is a spectacular property and one that really deserves an award. And you can see from some of the pictures on that we have up here, it's a beautiful place. And I've thought about all of the things that went on here building this, I watched it being built, the grading, and the building of the property itself, the structure, from the framing on up to the roofing, and I just have thought about how many people were involved in putting this complex together. And it is certainly a beautiful place and one that the students who live there can be proud of, and I think the management is proud of it, and I know they are, 'cause they put in lots and lots of hours studying how it should be and how it turned out to be. Of course, this is a large property and by the city ordinance, you must have a landscape architect to grow up tree plant. We do not have a landscape ordinance per se, but we do have a tree plant. But of course, on a property this size, the management always does a good job at landscaping it. And it's just some of the things, it's a complete landscape because it has trees, shrubbery, hardscapes, walks, and drives that are perfectly beautiful, and they always have some flowers out there that adds color to the property. You just can't miss it when you go by. And we're really proud to present to the Forum a beautification award. And I'd ask Mary Bass, she's the property manager at the Forum, to come forward and proceed to award. Mary, on behalf of our mayor, our city council, and beautification commission, it's my privilege to present this small token for a very beautiful place, and we thank you. Our next award goes to Henry Properties. I'm sure most of you know Ray Henley, but ever since I moved here, which is in 1975, I've always seen Henry Properties in the forefront with their beautification efforts. Ray takes a lot of pride in the units that he has. And I'd like to point out that this is one of the more recent properties he has renovated, and this is Magnolia Place. And I got to thinking about this thing the other day, and why it was called Magnolia Place, but then I realized that there's several beautiful magnolias on that property, and they were saved, of course. And not only did Ray renovate this old apartment complex, but he put a lot of effort into color schemes and the landscaping. If you'll notice there, this has been recently landscaped, and those are sizable plants, and you don't just pick those up on the side of the road. He's done a beautiful job, and there's a residence, Ray, is the residence your office now?
No, sir.
Is not, okay. But anyway, that's part of the property, and it backs up to the regional library on East Street. And we're proud to present the award to Ray for this particular property. And also, if you, many of you know where Greenbrier Apartments are, if you go by there now, you always, and now, and before and forever, you will see some very colorful flowers put in there. Always is the showplace right in that entrance to the Greenbrier Apartments. For those two properties, we would like to present Ray Henley with this beautification award. Ray, we appreciate it. Just a small token for a big effort, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Henry. It would be embarrassing for me to accept this on my behalf, because my wife, Brian Davis, our property manager, Dennis Rhodes, who does all the planning and the landscaping, they are the ones that I accept on behalf. Thank you, Henry.
Thank you, and I think we can all agree that what Mr. Henley has done over the last four decades as far as providing student housing and keeping it up and setting an example of how to run an apartment complex or run student housing and be a good neighbor. As someone who lives near many Henley properties, I'm appreciative of that, and thank you for what you've done for our community very much. Our next agenda item is public comments, and Ms. Sue, do we have anybody who has asked to comment? Okay. Moving on to item five, which is consideration of a motion to approve the consent agenda. I will say that item A, which is approval of minutes, I got kinda tickled because Sue is so stellar in what she does, and I was reading over the minutes, and I noticed we had a slight error under one of the minutes. I wanna call attention that is gonna get fixed, which is Ms. Carrie Howard presented Mayor Moore with a certificate of recognition for her accomplishments, being the first mayor of the City of Statesboro. And I think we'll all agree that the word "female" needs to be put in there, so that change will be made. Do I have a motion from council to approve the consent agenda with that change in mind, please?
Just have a question for Councilman Lewis. I know last year you wanted the Statesboro Housing Authority to do a little presentation. Do you still want that to happen again this year?
It's all good. I check that he's doing good over there. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Then I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor from council, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Mayor, before we go on, there was a question, just to clarify that clerical thing. Alcohol license application, let's see, the suit, the applicant filled out their own form and they scratched through the amount from $1,250 to $625.
That's food world number 793.
Yeah.
That's on both.
We don't prorate after the year, do we? I know that, I mean, I guess they did it.
They probably did some, but that's, that is, Mr. Reese tried to. I'll check it out.
Okay.
I don't know if you prorate so much.
Okay. I didn't know we had it in the ordinance we could prorate.
We do.
It does?
Yes.
It's a year, a full year, half year?
Uh-uh.
Anything in the second half year goes a half?
That's correct.
Okay. That's good, I understand. Just checking, it doesn't change the motion to support audit, I just wanna make sure.
Any other discussion? Okay. So Sue, you're gonna check them out? Will you let us know at the next council meeting what you found? Okay. All right. Item number six is a consideration of a motion to approve Resolution 2014-03, a resolution adopting a temporary six-month moratorium on the acceptance, issuance, and processing of alcohol license applications for locations where a previously licensed premises was adjudicated a public nuisance by a court of competent jurisdiction. I'm gonna ask City Attorney Alvin Lee Park to speak on this, please.
This is, you know, right now we're making some business with alcohol licenses, you know, that's issues with nine clubs in town, we have saw a leak from the spirit of court. And this moratorium will give us time to make appropriate changes to our alcohol, so other clubs can necessarily open right on the heels of those being shut by a security program. It buys some time to make those appropriate changes in the alcohol. And it will, the moratorium is in the package, I've made some changes to it, and one that I'm asking to be approved, the moratorium on any premises, and also for any premises within a hundred yard radius of the premises that basically clear the public mission of a competent jurisdiction. Again, just two doors down, block of the license.
Okay, do I have a consideration of a motion to approve by council? Do I have a motion?
Uh, so move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor by council, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is passed. Item number seven is a consideration of a motion to award a construction contract for Phase Two of the fire station project of BAK Builders LLC in the amount of $422,562. Do I have anybody from Public Safety that would like, or Darren, did you wanna come speak?
We recently solicited to build this and completing Phase Two of the fire station in West Grayding. This one built, converting existing old days into sleeping and dining type facility. Phase One completed, added additional days, and that is open. Of course, the document was advertised, which they go with contract laws, so it's carried in all trade organizations, open competition. We even had a man who had pre-bid, to make sure we filled out all questions and concerns of the process. We had eight contracts, ten, six, and then two bids. The bids were based on, a base bid, two developed developments, developed developments in case it ran over budget, we had flexibility to bring it back to them. Developed all the one, believed in closure in southeast corner of that section, developed all two, to leave the exterior Dublin aesthetic type of installation. I would like to add, the HVAC unit for the system, the inactive gas, and possibly a $30 unit, we're basically getting free when gas is ordered in. You have to see active gas or actually do classes for them, bring that to us, you have to pay a little bit for installing it, but we're getting a new unit, a full suite, and oversee for years and highly successful and efficient. So they're gonna use us as a demonstration of this market, of the way that we're doing this. So, well, that being said, the apparent little bit of BAK Builders, our base bid of $122,562, our recommendation is we'll pull on Phase Two, pull down, to that answer and question.
What's the timeline? We're not coming back here today.
I believe it's around 120 days from contract award.
You should not need that gas either, 120 days from now, we'll see.
Where did you say, Steve, that they had done the same type of a thing with?
They're doing one in Dublin, in Dublin City Hall right now, that should be online within this couple of weeks. The one that we're going to look at at the field, is the business office, certainly the gas line, it's just has one, it's been for about five years. And there's some other installs around the world, I don't know exactly.
And what did you say was the projected savings with this one?
They're projecting, you know, the energy saves in over 50%, 45 to 50% right now. So, what this unit does is it's a heat pump, it's like what you usually do in your house, instead of having an electric motor to drive, it has that kind of gas engine to drive, and it uses a waste heat recovery system to provide efficient heat in winter times, which is extremely cheap operating. And it's a, it's a very, very efficient, and they've been using that in southwest for a long time, and this is next year's marketing plan, this movement southeast, and that's why they're offering these, you know, a deal like this, where you get a free unit plus you get the insulation, it's also free, it doesn't cost us anything, it's costing $75,000 for the whole HVAC installation.
And what would that insulation cost have been?
Uh, I can't remember, what would be, 30 something thousand, 30, 35 thousand.
So significant, significant savings there.
And the only other thing we had to redo is that they had a maintenance to do for their, a data line that's that they can constantly monitor and analyze this thing. Hopefully it will result in a case study, they did a case study on a fire station from Arizona, which is one that we looked at and read, and that's what they would do, do a case study for this fire station in the southeast, and we said, I guess they're marketing.
And how did you all come together to put this, this sales calendar?
This gas authority in Georgia, we're a member of, is a member of the Gas Research Technology Institute, as part of that, they looked for co-sponsors to work with them on this, the gas authority set up in the city. I think we, we'll add some money to it, we'll go out and recruit some of our members to be, we'll get two units, and we'll have two members to do it, in Dublin and Statesboro, the two they asked. So, we worked with them on some other projects in the past, and they came to us and asked if we could do this.
Well, the only reason I bring that up is it sounds like it's a reflection of your relationship with them, and a reflection of your service and the significant savings for our community, so.
We appreciate them, and everything, people do, they think we'll follow through on them, and that's what we do.
And that's commendable.
And Ms. Highs, is that $30,000, that was just the installation, or did that include the?
That was on the unit itself, the installation's and additions.
Okay, so $30,000, that's how much the unit costs?
How much?
And they're giving it to us for free?
Plus, I'd say plus, plus most of the install.
Wow.
Once we get it built, it looks like a position, you won't really notice it from the outside of it, every zone in that building will have its own turnstile, so every room, every control, there's individual technology. Or windows set where they make their control, and they eat.
You wouldn't do that, would you, more than? Does anyone else have any more questions?
I would have, when we went to the guest and viewed the addition model, we'd have been in operation for four years, and they have come down, we're doing maintenance, should get them to come and sort it out.
Mayor, I just wanna say something real quick, to thank engineering and Chip, those guys, and Ronnie Shaw, they've been heavily involved in Phase One as far as the administration of it, and the management of that project, and it was a significant safety for the city for us to do that, and they have both been exceptional, I can't say enough about it, we really appreciate it, it was really safe. So, just one personal thing.
Thank you, thank you. Do I have a motion from council to award the construction contract as discussed?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All council in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Move on to the next item. Item A is a consideration of a motion to approve ordinance 2014-01, an ordinance amending certain sections of Chapter Six of Statesboro Code of Ordinances, alcoholic beverages drive through sales. Please consider this a first reading of this particular ordinance, and I will defer again to City Attorney Alvin Lee Park.
So, discussion of work stations, ordinance, certainly to allow places like these sorts that have a drive-through window to sell, packaging, without a pack to sell, alcohol through the drive-through, changes. Current ordinance prohibits that, and it's simply.
And Alvin, would it, just to be clear, as a first reading, it will be motion to pass, and there will be a second reading on this ordinance the next council meeting, is that correct?
I believe if you approve the first reading, you're allowing me to do that second time.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear on that. Do I have a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 2014-01?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's passed. Under item number nine, other business from city council, we are asking for planning and development, we'll have an update regarding the selection of the design team for the Georgia Southern University COS Fab Lab project. Who would like, who is designated to speak to that?
I would like to, like I said, a mayor council meeting was held yesterday between members of the selection committee, Georgia Southern, City of Statesboro, and the Arts Council, and potentially a firm was chosen. At this point, they will, Georgia Southern will contact the selected firm, and will verify their fee schedules and any additional negotiation with that, and at that point in time, will take that final selection. At that point, it will place it back on the council's agenda for report, but at this point in time, they have not, since he not, Ed Peterson told him about 2:30 yesterday, needs to, like I said, certain IDs and any final negotiation. Like I said, we'll place this back on council's agenda for report. You should be next, council. A few new questions, I'm certainly unsure that City of Statesboro, I was present, sitting here from Chair Chair, City Purchasing Director, Ken Raiter, and Tim Chapman, representing the Arts Council. Georgia Southern had quite a number of votes, and I'm not sure, I think they practiced, I think they were somewhat, but the selection process was pretty clear, like the five votes cast, there was four first-place votes, or one firm, and a second-place vote, so it was clear. And like I said, we'll give a full report once that firm has been in the process.
Okay, and that's, you thought that will be an act, council meeting?
Yes, I do.
And the construction easement, we talked about this a little bit, but how much are we gonna actually need from the property owners on the corner there?
The part depends on the final plan of how they're gonna run back and restore any addition. The key question is, is it gonna be, in the rears, is it gonna be a second floor added, if not, if not, and I think we'll, short-term temporary construction easement will be appropriate, but that, once the design phase is finished, I think at that point in time, we'll do it. The length of the easement, and also the size of the easement, will need to finish the story.
Will they be able to sign a design contract and a construction management contract without that?
In my opinion, I'm more likely to report the same negotiation, but I think they can sign that in more, I can be conditional, potential upon whatever easement's gonna set.
I know you're gonna give a full report in a couple of weeks, so I'm just kinda curious, is there any sort of a preliminary scheduling as to when the construction would begin, what the committee was sort of thinking, is a starting timeline?
There was a construction, each firm presented a construction schedule, and.
Just a rough estimate, you know?
I asked, well, less than a year, but I respect way back in, in that particular, each schedule was slightly different.
I think once the design is done in August, this is the general ballpark for starting.
But I'll.
You ever take a month?
If you like, this is the.
Don't want people driving down the road thinking any day now.
No, no.
Let's see, a couple of weeks, I can't tell you.
No, it's okay, just sort of a little, few months out, so.
We're gonna at least a couple of weeks to negotiate the contract, and then they're gonna actually design the thing, then you gotta get the construction manager on board.
Right, and they break into week periods, there's a five-week, five-week, eight-week, so it's segmented, but I respect what you're talking about, maybe a half month, eight months, so.
Okay.
I'm not considering any of the decisions. On business, I have one of them, I could, could ask the, see, we like to address, we need to address council on, I guess, plans with the changes we've had recently.
Yes, Steve Highs is now the gas partner, we'll be able to be in there for you. I mentioned to Frank, the layers of our land department, we had the issue come up to get up to the residents pretty quickly. And thanks to you, live with me, the rest is here. We have a contract to supply gas, and we get a fixed amount of gas for that contract. In fact, five years ago, we had, we carried excess on our contract, and you had to pay them every month, and we dropped part of that contract to save money, and we bought a peaking service to fill that hole in one of the days that we needed. Well, we bought that peaking service from BG, and it's good through 14. But BG came out last week and said that they're not going to offer that peaking service again after that contract expires, so we've got to fill the 500 meter hole. And as it happened, Southern Natural, as a part of some changes that made in that Elba Island, they're putting some gas capacity in the market, what they call an open season.
The problem with that is we only have till the 12 to speak, or raise our hand to get in line for some of that gas. What this firm will do is let us, we're going to shift back to full contract for that 500 units that we dropped, we actually dropped about 600 or something, we're only going to add 500 back, because there's not a peaking service available. It won't pick up until 16, so if you kind of do the math, we've got a hole left still, we'll get 14, we've got 16 covered, we haven't figured out what we're going to do for the winter of 15 yet, we'll have to come up with something to be back. But what I'm asking for today is to allow Frank or the mayor to sign this, but we want to take 500, 500 units. The savings about, you see, this is going to cost us about $100,000, when we've gotten rid of it, we saved anywhere between $100,000, $120,000, $75,000, I would think, well, how much you take, and how much you lose. This will raise our cost back up, and we'll flow through this cost of gas, and we roll, be a rate changer, rate hike, and add into the cost of gas, just like when we save that money, save, it lowered the customer cost, because we reduced our cost, and we rolled this through, and we put it into the average customer. Talking about this contract costs us about 30 cents per unit per day, our average customer, our whole gas customer for a whole unit is about 30, 25, 30 ECFs, 30 units, and then we increase it by 30 cents a year, it'll be like $9 a unit for our residential customers. It's pretty small, it can't be less than that, because it's 500 a day, and we won't use that every day. And we do sell, we can sell that back into the market, and we have a natural taker here, when we want to get rid, when we have excess, we can sell it back to Sylvan, is used for kids. We won't always get that full 30 cents, we may get 15 if we sell it. If it's some cold weather and people need it bad, we may get, we may get more, so, but that's what we're asking for, we're asking for, but Frank signed this, and we're intent to do more part of this, this gas is made by, and I'd say, we won't start using it until the winter of 16. Any questions?
Will we get it?
We should get it.
Okay.
The Gas Authority has a master shipper designation, which puts them at the top of the heap, when they come in. If you hadn't run in a plant, or you were a small shipper, and you came in on your own, it's kind of like a lottery, but this is about 95% sure that you'll get this vehicle back.
I mean, I just, we are a group of, to authorize designing this.
And if we didn't get it, what would happen?
We would, we would have to go start digging and trying to find some capacity somewhere, and it's very, very hard to get. There's some small increments coming available at you, and if you notice in that dollar amount, it says between 110 and 164 and down, and next line you'll see the cost is between 30 and 60 cents. This is because we're going to be dealing with two pipelines on this deal, Southern Natural is one, but they're doing an interconnected to feed Elba Island, instead of feeding gas out of Elba, they're going to feed gas into Elba for the export market. And we'll have to face fees on Southern Natural's pipeline, and there'll be fees on Transco, this is an interconnected between two major pipelines. And it can vary depending on when we take it and how we take it, so you never know exactly depending where it's going to be, it varies by the day. Yes, the way Statesboro's growing, and we've had it low, and we're running out to do industrial part, in the long range, it's probably good, just go ahead and put the pool, you know, let the contract be ours, and just can stop using the peaking service. It forces the scramble to try to get in line with this, because this made it easy, we could jump out here and line this gas up now, and we can unpack the scramble, we're still going to have to scramble a bit, trying to figure out what, I'm not sure, Gas Department, someday.
Okay, do I have a motion from council, turning to an authorization for firm contract changes with the municipal gas authority? As presented by Mr. Hotchkiss.
Motion approved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, can council please signify by saying aye if they approve?
Aye.
Any nay? And motion passes. Any other business from city council?
Very much.
Thank you.
Yes. The, I would like to ask council to consider a brief executive session, in the manner of the, on these to be eschewed, contingent upon the, by the middle common, and if there's any questions as a part, or if council would like to, write a motion to approve that least condition, but I think it more appropriate maybe to discuss a brief and executive session. The, maybe all the states.
We can call for one of those.
Motion to executive session?
Damn, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll enter to a brief executive session, if you could excuse us, please. Executive session is closed. Our next agenda item is agenda item 10.
No actual stagging for that.
Oh, no actual stagging, thank you, thank you, council on board. Public comments, did we have anybody that wished to make a public comment, Ms. Sue? Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Summary.
Set. All approved, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? May adjourn.